Welcome to tonight's meeting of June 26, 2023. Pre-session and any council reports. I just want to say a huge congratulations to Rich Seymour for being Rotarian of the Year. What a great honor. We're proud of you. And the only other thing I had last week was Nada's retreat.
So last week, I went to Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog meeting. This Wednesday is Bike to Work Day, so if you have a bike, ride it. They are also going to be sending out, and they did let people know they're looking for sponsorship of their Dr. Cog awards in October, so theoretically that will come to city staff, but if not, if I see it, I'll pass that along. And one thing that Dr. Cog is going to be working on is continuing on the trajectory for an overall comprehensive economic development strategy. And that will, again, once it's complete, set up a pathway for us to get more funding for the state overall and the region, and therefore potentially projects that we can apply to as cities. So if you don't have the plan, you don't have access to the federal money. So they're going to be doing that. We got, we had a report by CDOT, just a couple of interesting things. One, CDOT has actually reduced their vacancy rate particularly on, for employment, for their maintenance and operations crew from 38% to 17%. And they do contribute some of that to the workforce housing that they're creating and their programs. So they are providing housing stipends to employees of about $2,000 a month for especially their mountain employees. So that was interesting. And the other thing that CDOT is working on is their overall, their program distribution and how that relates to all of the different area councils of government. And this is how essentially they distribute funds for all kinds of, not only programs, but operations and maintenance. This is so tiny, it was much bigger on the screen. This is like font size one. And just how they, essentially how they distribute funding for certain projects, for maintenance, for transit, et cetera. And they actually did a breakout of what the Dr. Cog region actually gets. And they first looked at, one, Dr. Cog, the area that it covers has about 60% of the overall population of the state, has over 60% of the employment, and over 70% of the income and wages. But when you look at the breakdown of how much funding we actually receive from CDOT, it's more like 31% on average of the different funding buckets. And one that stuck out to me was maintenance and operations. We really only get about 26% of those funds despite being, and we also get a pretty low amount for transit. And so, long story short, Dr. Cog is going to be working with CDOT to look at what kinds of parameters and feedback do we want to give to CDOT when they start reevaluating their program distribution? And might we want, you know, might it be worthwhile to be asking for more in certain areas? So that's something that the Dr. Cog staff is going to be working on. And then just a reminder that July and August are Zero Fair for Better Air Month, so free transit for two months on RTD. So, thanks. Mayor Protem?
I don't have any report.
Counsel Baker?
Just our, just our okay of the public really safety thing on Saturday, which was a great success, and I think almost everyone was there.
The afternoon was fine. Counsel Seymour.
Wednesday, I attended the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation meeting. It was a pretty light agenda. We were finishing up budget updates. We did get a Jeffco School Superintendent Tracy Dorland does sit on that board and just gave a brief update about the fact that they're doing the engagements and the citizen engagements, and then especially, you know, in relationships to the properties that they are selling. And they were preparing at that time for the meeting, the Pomona six through 12 possible combinations. So they're doing a lot of outreach right now. We got updates on the waiting line and the people in line for Casa Bonita. The Lakewood people are just ecstatic about that. So the, that's, that's, those two gentlemen were on all the national shows too, so it's going to be a magnet for a long time to come. So hopefully they can recruit their $40 million that they put into that. So, yeah, you buy a new building and build it from scratch for that. Can't be pink and sticking out like that in the middle of everywhere either. And then the, yeah, the public safety open house. I heard you guys had a busy morning. The afternoon was good, but I think the winds kept a few people away. But, yeah, we, we got to chat with some people, so it was good.
That reminds me, our representative, DeZerger, that they asked for a task force, one person from West Dean, one from Arbada, he hadn't heard from CRL. So I connected the two and hope, I haven't heard from him, and there's supposed to be a meeting, I think, tomorrow night, so I haven't heard from Gene, and he would have called. So I just put him together and said, I don't need to be in the middle, just, he hasn't heard yet, and he doesn't want to miss the meeting, so, and all the details. Counsel Isadi?
Yeah, just, so I sent an email on this, but I'd like to ask for a poll to allow staff to research the possibility of getting a noise ordinance put into place in the city. I think it goes beyond the airport noise issue, but it can certainly try to help with that. There are lots of, you know, we hear about things related to racing, you know, when you have the modified exhausts of these racing cars, that causes a lot of disturbance in lots of different neighborhoods. From a business standpoint, there's disturbances that occur all the time related to businesses and not having, so that prevents them from having a productive environment for the employees. The nature, we talk about nature, noise pollution disrupts wildlife and ecosystems, and there's a lot of reasons for, and there are cities who are doing this more and more within the state, but also across the country, figuring out different, and there's lots of different ways of implementing it. So I'm just curious, just to see the pros and cons, to see what that could mean for the city, and see what the impacts could be. But I'd like staff to look into it and bring us back a proposal if it's feasible.
I know in my former years, we looked at it two or three times, and the biggest problem is, you have, it's worse than the fireworks, because you have to be able to see them do it, watch them do it, and know that that's the person that lit it. So with noise, you know, we're already can't catch all of the streetcar racers and stuff. So I think the big question is, from our chief, is, so how do we, we can have one, but does it have any teeth with it? Because I would imagine you have to be with that person on top of them when they're conducting whatever noise pollution they are.
Well, I think the initial thought, if I could jump in on that too, was, you know, training planes at 4:15 in the morning, I think it was. And I would like to know and get an opinion, if we pass something like that, is it enforceable with the FAA and the tower too? So I'd be interested in some research on that.
Mayor Protem?
My understanding is it's not.
Okay.
If the, we had this discussion when we started talking about, and my, the explanation that was given to us at that time was, basically if it's in the air, it's the FAA's, and none of our ordinances apply, because it's been brought up before. So as far as the airport piece, I know that it wouldn't, it wouldn't help the situation, just for that piece.
Yeah, and that, that hasn't changed. Our understanding is the FAA preempts the city on noise issues, so I don't think that a noise ordinance would be enforceable against aircraft.
But there are cities, though, who have air, noise, pollution, that installed ordinances where it was applicable.
So the one example that was recently offered was San Diego, and our understanding is that the San Diego International Airport is actually within the city of San Diego. So the city's regulatory authority covers that airport in a way that we don't include the RMMA inside of city limits, right? That's in Jefferson County, but outside of Westminster's boundaries.
I'd be open to us looking at a noise ordinance when I was a consultant out in California. Pretty much every city I worked with had one. I was surprised when it came to work for Westminster that we didn't, but I don't think it's the common vein out here in Colorado, but there could be things. I don't know what, but, often it came from just noise pollution along streets and then having to mitigate for that. And so it was more of an analysis of environmental impact, which we don't have for every project that we do. So we'd, you know, in some ways, I would, I'm just throwing stuff, you know, and thinking out loud, but would imagine that if we did have this noise ordinance that we would want to bake in, that we would have to evaluate development, and its impact to the noise environment or to other adjacent uses. That's how it used to be treated, and, you know, when I was doing environmental reporting out in California, but I don't know. If we're going to have it, I'd be used.
Yeah, I think to that point, you know, we hear about independents and those folks, right, with the constructions, and there's a lot of different kind of issues that we get that are related to noise, that even if it's not going to be applicable to airport noise, it seems like it's worth a look, is all I'm saying.
Counsel Baker?
I think the problem is enforcement. I think the mayor is absolutely correct. It'd be even worse than the fireworks, which we don't enforce. Are we going to have to have officers with really decibel meters and put in definitions of how much noise is too much noise? Are there going to be timeframes with it that you have to generate over 90 decibels for more than 10 minutes?
We have actually evaluated, when we were doing the development in the Western area, I believe the neighborhood adjacent to it was asking us to evaluate the noise impact. Does anybody remember this? I don't know. And we did actually have, we did go out with noise monitors to see.
You could put one on my fence constantly for the drag racing.
Well, yeah, there's, yeah, there's that. I mean, it was more in relation to potential development and something like events, I think, too.
We have the motorcycles that just can't go 30 miles an hour. They have to ramp themselves up and go. Mayor Protem?
My problem with it is the same, it's enforcement. I don't think, I think it's going to be an additional thing. I understand some of people's, because it's not the first time it's come up since I've been on council. And I think, if I think about how it would be applied, I just don't see that it would be that enforceable, and the times it would maybe actually use, like neighbor-on-neighbor kind of thing would be my concern. I mean, we see it with, the fireworks is a good example, and my understanding isn't that we don't enforce it, it's that it's hard to enforce, because they have to see it. The police actually have to be the ones who see it happen in order for them to write the ticket. So with our limited resources, if we, like, who's going to please the noise? I guess it wouldn't necessarily have to be, maybe it could be code enforcement. I don't know, I just, I don't see the overall value, the more I've thought about it in the five years I've been on.
City Attorney, pluses, minuses?
Well, I think enforcement is the challenge, and you'd want to get input, I think, from the police and from code enforcement if you were evaluating a noise ordinance.
Can we get a top-level, less than three hours conversation to see if it makes sense to even look at it?
Too easy, Mayor.
Okay.
Just say so. Do we got four?
Is there enough people that say, at least do that?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, you got them.
We'll do.
Could I, real quick? This is much easier, I think, but there was an ask from Counsel Emmens and I think Counsel Isadi about ballot measures, and I know there were a couple that we had talked about that were going to have come back. There's one specific one that I've brought up a couple times, and I really think of it in the light of the ballot measure, but it might be the right time to talk about lot sizes, because that was something that we had told the community we were going to look at again. And the challenge with looking at Thornton's model and water rates was the fact that our charter says something differently. So to me, that feels like if that is something we're ever going to do, that would be a charter change. So I would like to at least to know when we're going to have that conversation, because it's a couple times.
Sorry, what was the change?
If you remember back to the water discussion and the tiers, we had talked about the Thornton model, and in the Thornton model, they say what tier you end up in depending on how big your lot is, so that they're matching lot and still holding some accountability to conservancy and making sure you're not overwatering. But our charter has language that says you shall not discriminate, and so technically, if you said your lot's bigger than mine, so you get to stay in different tiers, then you're technically discriminating between you and I in our lot.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, I think the language at issue is that we can't discriminate within classifications of users, and right now residential is one classification of users. So the alternative path, if council wanted to pursue that, would be to create more than one classification of residential users. You just couldn't, right now, under the single residential classification, have the differential I honestly know that a charter amendment would be necessary, so much as a changing of the rate structure and the creation of new classifications of users.
And if, if the path is that, then that's something we're going to work on, that's fine with me. I just want to know that we're going to at least discuss a path and decide whether or not that is something that's right for our community, because that was something that I at least said that we were going to do, and I thought that the majority agreed with that, at least evaluating a way to do that and seeing if it would fit.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Do we have four that want to pursue that? One, two, three, four, there you go. Okay, so we'll add that to the July 31 ballot measures discussion. Is that appropriate?
Kind of that in between, or is there an alternate path to creating different classifications of users?
Okay.
So that there wouldn't just be one classification of residential users?
Discussion during water rates?
I think it could be part of the rate discussion.
And that would fit. I just didn't realize that was a path, and so if the only path was a charter amendment, I didn't want to miss my window.
And I could get a clarification, it is on staff's work program to look at it, and it had a longer timeframe on it because of the data involved and that we haven't structured ourselves this way. So we don't have the data that links our water accounts with lot size, with the actual size of the customer's lot, and so it would be a significant data gathering exercise. And I think that they had a timeline on that, which was lengthier than the one you're describing, Mayor Protem. So, but we'll work with the city manager, get an updated work plan, and coordinate that with the city attorney.
It does get complicated also, because the TAP fees that were charged were just the same TAP fees for residential as a single classification. So if there's a desire to have multiple classifications, I think you'd have to evaluate what the TAP fees should look like. So it does get a little complicated. I think that the solution that staff had identified was the changing of the thresholds between tiers one, two, and three, as a way to adjust for lot size, in a way to allow for more usage in each of the three tiers, or each of the two lower tiers, I should say, that would allow for larger lot users to stay within a tier for a longer period of use.
Counsel Nermella?
I was just going to say, if we could just have a little bit of lead time before, you know, maybe a study session on it in advance of getting more into the rates, so that we have time to ask questions, mull it over, and then adjust whatever's needed.
Anything else you need from us?
No, ma'am.
All right, we'll take a quick break before we get started. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, June 26, 2023. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting for June 26, 2023. We thank you for coming, and we'd like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. We want to be sure you all feel welcome, and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee will disrupt this meeting, and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in council chambers, and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be locked. Roll call, please.
Counsel Baker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Present.
Counsel Emmens. Counsel Isadi?
Here.
Mayor McNally?
Here.
Counsel Nermella?
Here.
And Counsel Seymour?
Here.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we excuse Counsel Emmens from tonight's meeting.
Counsel Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Counsel Emmens from this meeting tonight. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to consideration of minutes of June 12th. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the June 12, 2023 meeting as presented.
Counsel Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of June 12, 2023. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for this, for an item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments until the public hearing. Tonight, there are no public hearings. This evening, the city clerk has informed me, we have?
We have eight emails that were attached to the packet, one voicemail, and we have two speakers signed up to speak in person.
Okay, let's hear them.
The first speaker is Tom Lampeau.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be back in front of Westminster. Hope all of you are doing well. I'm here to pray for the city of Westminster. Heavenly Father, in Jesus Christ's precious and holy name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster. You are always welcome here. You are flawless in all matters. Your character can never be questioned. At times, we are overwhelmed with life. We feel alone, but we aren't. In Psalm 139, 1 through 4, David writes, "Oh, Lord, you have searched me and known me. You know when I sit down and when I rise up. You discern my thoughts from afar. You search out my path and my lying down, and are acquainted with all my ways. Even before word is on my tongue, behold, oh, Lord, you know it altogether." We can take comfort in knowing we are known by you, and you are nearer at all times. You are a patient, loving, and merciful God. In Psalm 86:15, it attests to your character and states, "But you, oh, Lord, are God merciful and gracious, slow to anger, and abundant in loving kindness and truth." Your patience, love, and mercy extend to us because you want everyone to commit to you. In Luke 12:23, it states, "Whoever is not with me is against me, and whoever does not gather with me scatters." So I beg your mercy and ask you to send your spirit to us. In John 16:13, you state, "When the Spirit of truth comes, he will guide you into all the truth; for he will not speak on his own authority, but whatever he hears, he will speak, and he will declare to you the things that are to come." Let the Spirit guide us in truth. In Jesus Christ's precious and holy name, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Counselors, Mayor, City Manager, Mr. Andrews. I had quite a few things on my list earlier today, but one of them being Elite Motors, the other one being the Alpine Vista Development. But after working with Logan Morley over in Community Development this afternoon, we'll kind of just let those rest for now, see how it pans out, so. There's been a lot of chitter and chatter on social media concerning some nesting eagles over at the Highland Ponds. I understand that there are federal regulations. The Wildlife Conservation Group has been informed. People are questioning, what's the plans moving forward with the water treatment plant with the eagles being nesting over there? So if we could get some kind of update on that, I don't know if City Manager's office is aware of all of that at this point. I was informed that there should be a letter coming from the Wildlife Conservation Group about that, because it is a federal thing with messing with the eagles and their nest while they're... and their nest while they're, whatever it is they do, laying eggs. All right. Quickly, I'd like to give both the fire chief and the police chief gold stars. Excellent. Saturday presentations, demonstrations, interaction with the community, just top-notch affair. Can't say enough for those first responders. And I believe Sergeant Esranger put all that together. He did a good job on his part. Take a minute and talk about one of the letters that's in your packet. There was a mailed-in comment from Charles Gallego. So if you need more information on that or contact information, a little more in-depth, because I had spoke with those people on what happened that night. So if you need more information, let me know. I've got all of their contact information. I think that's it. I'll play nice tonight.
Thank you. That brings us to City Manager's report. Oh, voicemail, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
No, that was the last one person we had sign up.
Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak even though I didn't get signed up on that. My name is Craig Russell. I've been here before. I wanted to talk to you about the systematic inspection reports that we get from the city of Westminster. And we've talked a few times about it. No one's really ever gotten back to me. And I've asked for you guys to nominate that so that we can get it on discussion with the council, but no one seems to find it important enough to be able to do that. What's upsetting about it is because it seems to be rather discriminatory, what we're doing on that. It's not applied equally to everybody. And something else that isn't applied equally to everybody is the way we're doing the water here in Westminster. And I'm kind of a little upset about that, too. I guess the analogy that I look at it is that I can understand how different rates are to different people. It's understandable. I mean, if you go to a gas station, not all rates are the same. But if Westminster only had one gas station in all of Westminster, wouldn't they charge their customers all the same rate? I mean, Nancy, if you went in, you were paying, I don't know, $3.71 a gallon. Shouldn't I expect to pay $3.71 a gallon? Ovi, shouldn't you expect to pay $3.71 a gallon? Any of you? But that's not the case. Because that's what a homeowner pays for water. Every thousand gallons of water, they pay $3.71, which is a new higher increase at the beginning of this year. But I, as a renter, pay $7.85 for that same amount of water. And I don't think that I should have to pay more than anybody else just because I rent. I think that's a discrimination, and I think it's unfair. We're asking for affordable housing in Westminster. I certainly do my best part to keep it affordable for the people that rent from us. But they pay their own water bills. I don't pay it for them. They have to pay it themselves. They reimburse it. And they're getting cheated. There's no other way to put it. When you pay over 100% more than the next guy for the exact same thing, that's just not fair. And I'm going to have to just assume you guys don't know about that. But then I'd wonder why the city council wouldn't know about something like that because they are in charge of that kind of stuff. And I thought, well, maybe, maybe it's because we only paid up till last, up till 2022, $6 for the interstructure fee per line. So if I had four units, I paid $6. But of course, we changed that to, we call it the road improvement fee now. And now it's $6 per every unit. Everybody pays it. So everybody's, everyone's bill, on top of paying double for the water, went up by $6. And that has to be paid even if the unit is vacant. If there's nobody living in it, you're still charging them for roadway improvement fees even if there's no one there. So if you had 10 units, you know, you went from $6 to $60. If you had more, you went up to $600. There was no information that this was coming down the line. I've looked at all my bills. I have them for years. There was no warning this was going to happen. Just all of a sudden, you got a bill for, you know, in my case, on a four unit, $24 instead of $6. So I thought that maybe the rate would come down to help compensate for that. It has not. We're still being gouged, and we're being gouged unfairly as a renter. Again, would you pay 115% more than the guy sitting right next to you at the gas station? Doesn't seem fair to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else raised their hand? Welcome.
Welcome, mayor and council. I just wanted to just take just a couple of minutes. Some of you, I think all of you, probably at least on the council, got an email from me and my wife here this last week concerning a proposal for getting on the ballot this November, a measure that would allow us to do what every other city surrounding us does, what any, just about all cities of any size, you know, more than just a few thousand people do, and that is to have wards or districts in their election of city councillors. That ensures that each area is better represented. It facilitates better communication to your councillor. One side benefit is if you look at the cost to run successfully for election here in Westminster for the city council, it tends to be, you know, maybe three times that of similar cities surrounding us like, you know, Thornton or others because you only need to get your message out to a little smaller area than the entire, than the entire city. There are probably many ways to skin that cat. I proposed one, I shared a proposal that probably is the least disruptive, I guess, if you will. It kind of keeps the city council about the same size and divides things up kind of by North and South Adams County in a kind of a Jeffco ward. In the end, obviously, that will have to be fine-tuned based on population so that it's equally balanced. There are other ways to do it. Personally, I probably would prefer to have, actually add probably another district or two and even have a little more granularity there and maybe even increase the size of the council by a couple of people, whether that's through districts or even at-large approach there. But I want to really kind of minimize the at-large part of it because I think that you really want to have that focused attention that comes with having wards and having councillors being able to just be primarily responsible, not, you know, I don't want to disregard the fact that they need to look out for the entire city, but certainly have that focused attention that comes with a smaller ward that they represent. So if you look at that email, you'll see that all the cities surrounding us do it. Even cities that are smaller than us have as many as eight or 10 councillors. And it probably worked pretty well back in the day when Westminster was a real small city to have just a few, just at-large, you know, half dozen councillors. I think we've outgrown that a long time ago, and it's way, way past time to get that on the ballot. We don't need to study anymore. You know, I think that was not very helpful to put a ballot measure out there to do a study. It's been done. It's been being done all around us. Let's, you guys need to just get together and agree on something that makes sense, and let's get it on the ballot here in November.
Sir, may I have you introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, okay. Yeah, some of them know me because I've talked to them before. I'm Scott Ireland and am a resident, longtime resident. We go all the way back to 1986. I've lived in the city, kind of up on the north end of town. Thanks.
Anyone else? City manager.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, councillors. We'll go ahead and get started with our city manager update. If we could have the next slide.
Oh, sorry, we have a voicemail.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot. It's the reason I was trying to get that piece done first.
Hello, this is Cheryl E. Markinson. Loved in Westminster most of my entire life. I live at, in Kings Mill on West 90th Avenue. I am calling to urge you not to vote for a new water treatment plant. I feel that the old one can be repaired at much less cost. Our citizens in Westminster, especially our seniors, were already taxed and property taxed almost out of our ability to stay in our homes where we have lived for many, many years. I don't think we need a new tax to buy a new plant and build a new plant when we can repair the old one. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Let's try it a third time, city manager. You're up.
All right, mayor, Mayor Protem, councillors. We'll work through our update here. So next slide. So, good news. The much-anticipated Bon Chon is open in downtown Westminster. And I've heard that some of our city staff members have gone to check out the cuisine and have loved it. And so encourage folks to go visit Bon Chon, and then certainly go check out the other businesses that we have in our downtown as it continues to grow. So good news story there. Next slide. One of the things that we've been working on since the Great Global Cleanup and Earth Day and all of that earlier this spring was our city participation in the Leave No Trace campaign. And specifically, our communications team is going to run a summer photography contest. So starting currently, we've got the contest for residents to actively and positively engage while educating people about the city's Leave No Trace initiative. So if you submit your best photos showcasing Westminster's natural beauty that we aim to protect, they're going to select kind of those top-level folks, and then we'll run a, essentially, a community-wide social media contest to determine the winners. We've got some prizes identified from Parks, Recs, and Libraries Department. We thank them for donating those to the project. And so if you want more information, go to our city website slash photo contest. And then we wanted to follow up on one of our young students here in Westminster. Participated in the 94th Scripps National Spelling Bee. And so Adidi Mutu Kumar won the Colorado State Spelling Bee back in March. And then she finished 74th place tied for that overall at the Scripps competition in DC later this spring. And so another great achievement by one of our up-and-coming Westminster students. So congratulations to her, and I'm sure her parents are extremely proud. Next slide, please. Some things to know. Environmental Advisory Board meeting goes this Wednesday, June 28, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and that's in the City Hall CMO Conference Room. City Hall is closed on Thursday morning for employee safety and security exercise from 8:00 a.m. to noon. That's this Thursday. We'll have information coming out to the community via social media for that. Essentially, it's been a long time since the city has conducted fire and evacuation drills, tornado drills, and we've never done an active shooter drill here in City Hall. And so we'll be doing those three activities and working through those on Thursday morning. So we appreciate everyone's patience as we do that, but those are three important things that we need to do for our employees that work here at City Hall. Neighborhood Nights and Movie in the Park Friday, June 30, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. It's Historic Westminster down at Fireman Park. And the rescheduled City Council Study Session for Monday, July 3, is moved to July 31. So just a reminder for that. And then there was some confusion about the Plan Commission meeting for tomorrow night. And I guess it was on the website, and it was on the council calendar, but it's not tomorrow night. So we've pulled that down off of the website and wanted to make sure people knew that that was not going to happen here tomorrow night. Next slide. And so Fourth of July Celebration for the City goes Tuesday, July 4. That's 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. at City Park. Our city administrative offices are closed on Tuesday, July 4 in recognition of Independence Day. And they'll be, they will be open, though, however, on Monday, July 3. Special Permits and License Board Meeting is Wednesday, July 5, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., City Hall, Council Chambers. 1870s Vintage Baseball, presented by the Westminster Historical Society, will be held Saturday, July 8, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Wolf Run Park. Neighborhood Nights, again, on Friday, July 7, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. That's also in Historic Westminster Fireman Park. And then our next city council meeting will be Monday, July 10, beginning at 6:30 right here in Council Chambers. Next slide. Information-only items as proclamations and presentations. I'll just make a caveat for the council. Not asking for any decisions, not asking for any guidance. If you want to talk about that at a future meeting or a study session, we certainly can. I had asked our city clerk, Abby Fitch, to do some research, find out other options. We can look at other options, but certainly, you know, just something to look at our efficiencies in our meetings, and is there a better way? And so if you don't think there's a better way, no harm, no foul. But we certainly offer that up as a potential solution. Next slide. And then, as always, remind the community to please give us a call. We want to take your calls, your questions, your concerns, your issues, your feedbacks, your thoughts. Please give us a call at the City Manager's Office, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Nextdoor. As always, we want to remain accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions? Counselor Normella.
I was just wondering on the proclamations piece, when would we have a chance to discuss that?
If the council so desired, we could schedule it for an upcoming study session. Right now, our August study session cycle is pretty slow. So we've got some options in August if the council wanted to do that.
I agree. Do we have four people that would like to see a discussion? I see, I see more than four.
Okay, we've got it, mayor. And so we'll get that on the, on the calendar for August. Thank you. Now, depending on questions, other ones?
No, just a quick note, Mayor Freitag. This came in late as a liaison to special permits and licensing. I believe the licensee requested to have their hearing pulled for the 5th, and it has already been updated on the website.
Good, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? That brings us to council comments. Counselor Normella.
I just wanted to, one, thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for putting on such a great outreach event on Saturday. And I was really happy to see how many people attended and really impressed by everything that was, everything that was put together, whether it was people rappelling down our tower, our clock tower, or, you know, the helicopter being there to... So it was just, it was really great, so thank you. I also just wanted to acknowledge the loss that we have today. And we lost a really important contributor to just the overall fabric of our city. She, Mary Beth Jenkins, was a consultant with the city for about 20 years. And she was the brains and implementation behind a lot of our major retail and place-making efforts throughout the city over those past 20 years. So if you go to the Promenade and Walnut Creek, and you go to the Orchard or the New Downtown, her efforts were behind getting the retail, getting the vision that the city had into actual physical form. And I had the pleasure of being able to work with her for quite some time through the downtown project. And, you know, she had a great passion for what she did. She was definitely a placemaker, community builder, and she put a lot of energy and thought and time into our city. And it was just an example of how to be a leader in, especially as a woman, creating her own business, coming into Denver, and then truly making... creating her own business, coming into Denver, and then truly making a significant impact, not only in our city but many others. And, uh, her tenacity and her grit, uh, were one of her carry, significant characteristics that I...
And her glasses, she always had glasses to match every outfit.
Fantastic glasses, always put together, um, because she just thought about all the details. And, um, she really focused on building relationships with people and, um, and working those relationships over many years to, to make things come to fruition. And so, um, just wanted to say I really miss her. Can't, you know, it, she was certainly gone too soon. So, I, I know staff and her colleagues and her family and friends are definitely impacted by her loss. So, thanks.
Councilor Baker?
Yes, uh, I would like to emphasize the email we got about, uh, the city limiting the, uh, speech opportunities to a candidate. A couple weeks ago, we had addressed this in emails and, uh, it seems there must be more to the story. So, I think we should be vigorous in really pursuing this and finding out, uh, hopefully it was a miscommunication how this occurred and this, and this really gentleman was given the wrong information.
Anyone else? I just wanted to share one more time because we're so proud of him. Um, Councilor Seymour was awarded the Rotary's Outstanding Rotarian of the Year. Congratulations. Um, and that's for putting self before others, or, uh, others before self.
Service.
Service before self. I knew I didn't have it correct, thanks. And, um, the public safety got triple A pluses. It was just a fun, fun afternoon. Um, wind was wonderful, the, you, I don't know who you talked to about the weather, but it was perfect. And, um, three of us, Councilor Nermella, Mayor Protem, and myself are attending CML Conference. And, um, it, it was, started with a great day. We have more tomorrow and, um, just half a day on Wednesday. But, um, great conference, great to see others across the state and hear what others are doing with same topics we deal with. I think the networking and sitting with these different folks at each of the breakouts is what's really a, a plus because you're able to ask your questions, they ask you questions, and, um, it's just a, a great event. So, I'm, um, happy to get to go to that. Anyone else? Councilor Baker?
Yes, uh, Mayor. Uh, I also think it's important to recognize the other people that were at the Public Works on Saturday, which included sewer cleaners and water guys and street plowers. And they were also an important part of...
Yep.
...what keeps this city running and they should be acknowledged along with our first responders.
Everybody that was there, it was fantastic. Um, that brings us to 9A, Resolution Number 18. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 18, Appointing One Alternate Member and Promoting One Member from Alternate to Regular Member to the Human Services Board.
Councilor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 18. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
And Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Councilor's Bill Number 33. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 33 on First Reading to approve a proposed amendment to Section 11-5-6.5A of the Westminster Municipal Code to modify the concept plan review process.
Councilor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Council's Bill Number 33. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
And Councilor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0, though.
That brings us to Item B, Authorizing a Contract with Motorola Solutions. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to base, or, move based on the recommendation of the City Manager to determine that the public interest would be best served by authorizing a negotiated purchase agreement from the National Association of State Procurement Officials, authorized, provided Motorola Solutions, Inc., to design, construct, deliver, and implement and upgrade Motorola Astro P25-3 site, SimoCast, radio system, dispatch console, mobile radios, and other radio systems related to infrastructure in the amount not to exceed $4,449,267.
Councilor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize a contract with Motorola Solutions. Any further discussion? Councilor Baker?
Yes, uh, I understand we're getting the best price possible on this because of the way we're buying it through. Uh, though, I would like to understand approximately, how many radio units do we have?
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, Norman Hobart, Chief of Police. This time, I'd like to call up Nelson Martinez. He's our Technical Services Coordinator and has all the nitty-gritty answers for you.
Perfect. Welcome.
Thank you. So, uh, to answer your question, we, uh, have about 700 radios on the system, including Public Works, Fire, and Police. We allow about 4,000 radios in our system from other agencies in case we have, uh, incidents where we need help and, and vice versa. We work with other agencies.
And you've already, O'Gill, I can anticipate, my next question is, they were all really interoperable?
Yes, they're all.
With all our sister agencies around?
Yes, and this will be a Phase 2 radio system, which is the next level of technology. Uh, basically allows us to take our 10 frequencies and double the capacity, which is becoming necessary in this area. Some any radio in this, in Metro Eric and talk in our system and vice versa.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Roll call, please.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Nermella, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Item C, 10C. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the City Manager to find that the public interest will be served by a sole-source agreement with Valley High Motel Purchase, For Purchase Not to Exceed $219,000 for 2023.
Councilor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 10C. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Azadi?
I just have a quick question. Um, so, I'm in full support of this. I just know that typically with these sorts of shelters, there's a silent issue of, of rules that reduce the access to all of the various folks who are experiencing the need for these. Uh, so, my question is, so, for example, there's identity documentation, criminal records, immigration status, all sort pet policies, you know, that, that reduce the access to these folks. What are the rules, what would the rules be in this setup?
Welcome.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors. I'm Thomas Redd, a Michler Director of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. Um, Councilor Azadi, I'm not familiar with the exact rules and guidelines that are required. Um, I know that, uh, the primary barrier to housing people in this hotel is, um, previous behavior that caused them to be banned by the hotel itself.
Okay. Can you get back?
Yes, yeah, I can speak with, uh, our expert informant, who is Kate Skarbeck, and get back to you with more details on that.
Thank you.
Councilor Seymour?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, i- if I'm correct in also assuming that part of our homelessness, um, effort is it's, it's critical that we have beds available in order to, if, to offer those services and offer those beds before we can move someone off, um, public land. Is that correct?
That's correct. This provides the home, the hotel voucher so that we can get them into, uh, a shelter of some sort. But, it's not a traditional shelter, it's just space in a hotel where we can issue that hotel voucher and get them out of, um, our public spaces or private spaces, for that matter.
And then, the other part of the continuum is, is if they are eligible to go to this, having not been banned before, and there are rooms available, then at that point, we, we start the timeline to remove them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Baker?
I mean, the, how many stays approximately does this buy?
You got that? Um, I will have to get back to you on that exact number, Counselor, I don't know.
Um, Mayor Protem?
I'm, I'm curious, so, with folks who have a history with this particular place, how does that affect being able to move to the next step of our continuum, or does it?
We would look to use a hotel voucher for another, um, facility.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to, uh, Item 11A, Second Reading of Council's Bill Number 32. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 32 on Second Reading to approve amendments to Section 11-11-8 and 11-11-16 of the Westminster Municipal Code to update references to the comprehensive plan with the signed regulations.
Councilor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 11A, uh, Council's Bill Number 32. Is there any further discussion? Um, roll call, please.
Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
It is 7:41. I wish everybody a happy Fourth and a safe Fourth. And don't forget that, um, every ball field will be filled with, um, our Sparkler Tournament that starts Wednesday. So, happy Fourth of July.
Mayor?
We do have a post-meeting presentation. No.[1332.15]
No.
Yeah, I think the time was just...
Okay, welcome to the post-meeting. And we have four items to talk about and give direction to if we have it. Let's just do them one by one. The first one is, in the event that a number of speakers during city council meeting, general public come... No, that's not it. Oh, what was I reading? Oh, threatens to... I... Threatens is what... I'm going, what am I reading? Threatens to unduly prolong the proceedings. The mayor would be authorized to reduce each speaker's time for a maximum of five minutes to a maximum of three minutes. I'm only in favor of that because it's an action that we can do. No consequences have to be added.
If you... Because in the past, I think we have done that before. If I... My memory serves me correctly, or at least it's been asked to be done.
Well, there's definitely a mechanism during testimony on public hearings. So where the number of speakers during testimony threatens to unduly prolong the proceedings, their testimony time can be reduced to three minutes.
And so my question about it is, is it... I mean, is it a... If you did it, like, I wouldn't want to be in the middle of a three-day thing and then say, okay, now we're going to cut it back. So it would be all or not, right? It would have to be...
We'd recommend it be uniformly applied, not changing in the middle of a comment period. But from the beginning, it would need to be consistently applied.
Would there be a... So I guess if you're trying to gauge and say, how are you going to gauge it? Because I guess making sure that there's proper notification is my other concern. And I mean, it's not a showstopper for me.
We did it when we had all the Walmart folks, the for and the against. I mean, it was packed house, they were out in the foyer seated. We knew we could be there till one or two in the morning, which I think we were. And we just made that determination, three minutes. Those that were lined up to speak, we gave them some time to, if they were trying to give the whole thought, we gave them time to get together and figure it all out. But you know my style, I don't do anything unilaterally. So if we had an upland come again when we first were hit with that, and I probably would have us have that discussion, see where everybody was, go with the consensus, and get on with it.
I think it's good, I guess I would just ask that wherever we publish how we do things, that it... That we have that posted somewhere, that it could be three to five, depending on, you know, however you want to word it. I mean, I'm sure you can do it a lot more legally eloquent than what I would say.
And the reason I'm okay with it, after three days of listening to testimony a year ago, or was it two years ago? Anyway, a long time ago.
Four score.
It was how many hours before the first person talked about anything we could even use under quasi-judicial? And so we listened to hours and hours of stuff that they hated it, they didn't like it, blah, 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 that just had to sit there and run straight out our ears because we can't use that for our determination. And I think I counted less than a handful, two handfuls of people that addressed what we could really make our decisions with. So I have no trouble making it three minutes when we have big things. You can say a lot in three minutes and let everybody then speak. Counselor Baker?
I think this is a very bad idea. I think we gain a lot by sticking to our really traditional limits of five, you know, minutes. And I think, I mean, going back to Walmart, wasn't that 15 years ago?
Yep, and we did three minutes.
Which I think was a mistake, so you had the uplands, we had the trash, we had Park 1200.
So the trash, so it was public comments, would this apply to public comment and public hearings?
So the proposed edit is to change the rules on public comment. The public testimony already contains this provision, where the public testimony can be reduced if the number of speakers threatens to unduly prolong the proceeding. This would adopt a similar rule for public comment.
Okay.
And it would be published with the agenda. So right now, when we publish our agenda each week, we include the rules in the agenda posting. And this, if this rule were adopted by council, this would become part of each week's agenda.
Counselor Seymour?
I'm not in favor on the public comment side of it. I think what we found too, we're just looking back at that, most of the people never went over three minutes anyway. You know, a majority. So that's why I'd rather not limit the public comment side of it.
Counselor Azadi?
I want to hear what you guys say first.
I don't mind on the hearing part, but that's what I thought we were talking about, public comment. I'm like Counselor Seymour, and that's really consistent with my... When this came up in the past, I was hard, I liked the five minutes. I didn't want to change it for public comment, and I would be the same for this.
I don't mind us having the ability to get to three minutes if needed. I do watch public comment times because I'm just, you know, I'm curious, and often it is around three minutes. So, you know, because you kind of make your point and then move along. And most of... And I'm fine with five minutes most of the time, I mean, it's great. But, you know, if we have 100 or 200 people, I think it would be good to be able to get to three minutes.
People not want it in there at all? Yes, sir.
I'm not in favor of either, I think, reducing... Not at, you know, maybe some years down the road, it might be useful. But now, there's too much public distrust of what we do in here. And limiting voice now, it doesn't feel right. I think people should just say, if it's 200 people, then that's what democracy is. Let them speak. So I'm not in favor of any of this.
And I was reading it, testimony. So if it's the public comment, I tend to agree. Unless, like you said, at least have it in the rules, so if we had to use it, we could.
I don't even want the rule. I just stay with the five minutes.
Anybody want it in the rules?
Not really intending to use it, or...
I don't see anybody, so that one's out the window. Number two, should city council wish to limit the duration of city council comments, a 10-minute limit is proposed. There's no teeth to that, so I'm certainly not in favor. Anybody else?
For me, I'm a no. I think there are times where it's appropriate, you know, if it becomes frequent and we can please ourselves, I guess that's my point. I was on council when this came up in the past, and I opposed it then. It was... I just don't, I don't see it. I mean, we're elected, and I feel like if we can't please ourselves at some point, the people will replace us. And so, to me, I don't think it's necessary.
No.
I say no.
And this is still limited to 10 minutes for council? It's unlimited now, right?
Well, we've had people take up to a half an hour.
I'm actually in favor of limiting us, but not limiting the public. I think if we were elected, but we can be concise and succinct with what we say, there are moments where we can take two hours. That's not fair to the proceedings. I'd rather limit us than the people, so I'm in favor of it.
I would say if there's... Maybe it's something that we could establish for specific deliberation, or if we all, you know, if... Especially if it's something where we might have had 100 people commenting, and we could say, okay, you know, giving ourselves some guidelines to say, hey, folks, let's try and keep our comments down to this time. It better, I think it's more on the policing side versus every time. I certainly would not want it every time, because I think I certainly have gone over 10 minutes and just in questions. Is this during deliberations or just public comment?
Just public comment. So the deliberations are not limited. And under Roberts' rules, you know, deliberations can be handled to move the meeting forward if that's the will of council. This is intended to be an edit to the rules just on council comments at the beginning of the meeting. After public comment, you have what, city manager comment and then council comment. This would be a 10-minute limit to the council comment portion of that agenda.
Oh. I could go either way.
Counselor Baker?
So who on council requested this change?
So I had a question as to whether Roberts' rules incorporated an automatic 10-minute limit, and I don't think it does. So I proposed this for the discussion today. Because it's not in Roberts' rules that there's a 10-minute limit on comments. It's up for your consideration tonight. And if you choose not to, we won't move any edit on that subject forward.
Well, since so many of our protocols have no consequences, we do our own thing anyway, so I'm not in favor of adding one more thing that can't be tailored. So I'm a no. Do we have any yeses?
No.
Okay, that one's gone. Public comments received a voicemail would be transcribed and attached to the record instead of being played during the meeting. Mayor Protam?
I'm a no on this one, just because I feel like if people wanted text, they would probably just email. I feel like it's not widely used, but it certainly is something that people that, you know, may not have access to come to a meeting are able to use, and their voice is heard. So although it is challenging sometimes because of the audio, I would be more in favor with doing away with that as a mechanism versus transcribing them. I would prefer to leave it, but if, you know, that was the option, I wouldn't want to. There's too much that can be missed in inflection and stuff when somebody wants to give a voice versus text.
Yeah, I think of somebody's voice and their speaking, their thoughts is far more effective in the session, too. It's, to me, almost equal to them just standing there because they're, we're hearing them, we're here, you know. And I think logistically, too, you know, I kind of, my buck stops like Sunday night. I'm not going to pick up and look to see what's happened on Monday, you know, because I'm working. So I don't know if I'd catch those as, you know, if they were transcribed late. So I'd prefer to keep them.
Well, and I'm a no, and I don't think it's ever been abused. Even when I got the 44 people to call in, what, they take about a minute each?
Voicemails sometimes seem to be more succinct, in my opinion, because they're not looking and forgetting what you're talking about. And I do that myself when I'm talking to somebody. So, I mean, I feel like they're usually more succinct.
I think it just gives them a voice.
Yeah, people have lives, but they can't be expected to come in here and make and be live. So we should allow them to speak if they want to speak, and we should hear it.
Okay, so that one's a no. The consent agenda would be expanded to streamline meetings, including broadening the scope of the consent agenda and deleting a requirement. The Counselor's bills may be removed from the consent agenda only after a majority vote of council. Now, I don't, I thought one person can take anything off the consent agenda.
And that would continue. Right now, I believe that the rules contain a requirement that a majority vote be taken to remove something on second reading, if I'm not mistaken. So we would vote, we would propose removing that requirement and keeping that any member of council can pull an item off of consent. I think it's, it might be an outdated reference, because I don't, I'm not aware of a majority vote having been taken on second readings of ordinances to take them off. In that, I don't think we're putting ordinances second reading on consent unanimous.
That's right.
And the consent agenda would be expanded and streamlined? I don't know what those parameters are now for it to go into there. So I didn't have, I don't have enough information to make a good decision on that.
I can help if I could. So the proposal would be to add to the eligibility for inclusion on consent resolutions. I don't think resolutions are currently allowed on consent, per the rules. Amendments of existing contracts are not currently on, but they could be if the rules were amended. And those are, I think those are the two substantive additions. I'll look to Mr. Graham, who helped draft this. But I think on consent, it would really be those two, that we would propose adding resolutions, amendments of existing contracts. We already potentially have licenses and permits. Mr. Graham?
Sure.
Mayor, I'm a no. Counselor Graham, Deputy City Attorney. The current rules do not provide for contracts, renewals and amendments of existing contracts to be approved on consent. They also don't allow licenses and permits, or amendments of existing... Sorry, renewals of existing licenses and permits to be placed on consent. And then amendments of any of those things currently, those are not allowed to be placed on consent either. Again, you, any member of council could pull one of those items off consent if they wanted to.
Counselor Nermella?
As a staffer, current and past, I really like this idea because it's just more efficient for staff. And I've seen it in action in other communities where it's, these kinds of things are allowed on the consent agendas, and it allows you to focus in on the, you know, the significant projects and those conversations that need to be had. So I would be a yes on this.
With the ability to pull anything off, I don't, I think that it's fine because there are times, there are things that none of us may disclose save us some reading.
Counselor Baker?
What has been the problem have? How could we streamline it? I mean, are we going to save two minutes?
It's like that...
By having a contract separately?
We had, we had one night where it was just a bunch of public works contracts that just needed to be amended, and we had to read through them all.
Especially the, my favorite one, the supplies and chemicals for the...
That's a good example.
Yeah, that one was a page of them, you know, it's an amendment. But, you know, and like the Mayor Protam says, is as long as any one of us can pull any one of those, I think that makes it valuable. But, you know, and it's not time to, and then having time to concentrate on the important... But, you know, and it's not time to, and then having time to concentrate on the important things. Some nights it doesn't matter. Some nights it would, so...
Yeah. And if somebody has a problem with it, I mean, they're going to say something anyway, so...
Yeah, and then we can bring the questions. I'm okay.
So I'm a no.
Okay. Counselor Seymour?
I'm okay with it. Yeah.
Good. So I think the schedule for this, Abby, remind me, I think we come back on...
July 10.
July 10 with this item number four would be a codification in our council rules then. So is that correct?
Correct. Yes. It would be a resolution for your consideration with that one changed to the consent agenda.
And so one, two, and three fail based upon this discussion tonight. Okay? Good.
Because then the next week, or the next meeting, it could be a resolution on the consent agenda.
Correct.
Never mind.
Once adopted, yes.
It's a circular discussion at that point.
It is 8:10, and we are...
Wow.